You have a conditional use with a kennel license to keep the dogs a certain way, so possibly the neighbors can't hear them. I mean, that's what most municipalities do. Doesn't mean that's what you have to do. Hello?
Alright, we're good.
We need to mute himself. Um, we're on. They should be able to hear us.
Alright, Wayne muted himself at this point.
Bring Wayne back. Wayne, can you put him back on? Wayne, can you come back on to the beat?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Okay. What most, uh, cities do is limit the amount of dogs one may have. Uh, most cities, not everyone, four dogs is a limit. After four dogs, you have to get a kennel license. And there's conditions about the way the dogs have to be kept. And, uh, those conditions may lead to, uh, you know, the dogs not being so noisy. So, I mean, it's up to you. Yes. Hello?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah.
Did you hear? Did you hear that? There for this? Else will do this. Limit the amount.
Well, I, I think you should limit the amount, and then you have to have a kennel license that allows you a certain amount. And then you have to keep the dogs a certain way once you have a kennel license. There isn't any need in reality for anybody to have nineteen dogs, okay?
Beyond this one? I'm going to make a comment. I've seen situations in...
That's my suggestion. You can do whatever you want.
So, what are your, what are your suggestions?
I'd like to make a comment. I just got a text that says, "So the meeting isn't coming through. Who's enforcing this?"
Well, we're having technical difficulties. Actually, I hope having technical difficulties...
So, who's going to enforce the amount of animals? Is that what you're asking?
The zoning law. Yes, the zoning law. What if we had an ordinance? I recommend, Randy, that while you're looking that up, maybe you go up to see if there's any rural communities that in fact have a, um, an ordinance that restricts... Oh, wait a minute. Before we talk about anything further, we need to address the issue of public hearing. So, I think if, if we're having those technical difficulties, we need to adjourn the meeting and reconvene at another time and another manner. I don't think you can continue a public meeting where the public cannot participate.
I have a question. What if we just, what if we just pulled that phone off and dialed into there and they can all dial in and we don't have a matter of, like, a...
Well, we could, we could dial into the meeting.
Which might be better than using our internet.
Right. What I'm saying, you're just a phone line that, if anything, which people hear.
Which can't listen to us anymore.
Right.
You can't really see everybody anyway, because the average is not on there. But we can call into the meeting on the com... If you want to try to do that, I'm fine with trying to do that. Let's finalize this meeting.
I would rather, I would rather...
I think it's a suggestion.
To call back.
Yeah. I'm thinking you suggest one of my friends.
Yes.
I'm going to call for a five-minute recess until we, uh, get our front line set up. So, the public hears me. Great. We're going to reconvene so that everybody can have all the right members of our meeting.
Should you not, like, write on the receipt or show it in front of it? Dial in directly?
Well, they're all, they're...
They're all in...
It's us that's having the problem.
Oh, so they can see?
They can see each other, and, and they can hear each other. They just can't hear us.
I understand.
Which if we dial in to get a computer connection?
Right. And that doesn't give us a chance to do a meeting?
That's good of you, but...
Well, we're still controlling the meeting.
You're dialing in, so we can get the best... We're going to sound these as soon as I can because everybody's talking.
Yeah.
I said that they are going to try and accomplish all sets.
Okay, so we're going to take... I get it, German?
You don't need much more than about ten more minutes for the public to... Well, I have people saying, "Oh, come on." You know, I... We don't really need to...
Who's that?
We're trying to...
What happened?
We're giving, um... You're going to leave this interconnection off, then, uh... Yeah, we're leaving it off. You're going to have to unmute them. My personal opinion, and if you're not violating anything, we're having technical difficulties. We're going to stop the meeting now. Yeah. Yeah.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by a pound.
I picked New York.
Enter your participant ID, followed by a pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. You are in the meeting now. There are nineteen participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are, you have been put on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk. You are muted. 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 You are muted.
Well, we could, we could dial into the meeting.
Which might be better than using our internet.
Right. What I'm saying, you're just a phone line that, if anything, which people hear.
Which can't listen to us anymore.
Right.
You can't really see everybody anyway, because the average is not on there. But we can call into the meeting on the com... If you want to, if you want to try to do that, I'm fine with trying to do that. Let's finalize this meeting.
I would rather, I would rather...
I think it's a suggestion.
To call back.
Yeah. I'm thinking you suggest one of my friends.
So, can you put your phone on?
Yes.
All one?
I'm going to call for a five-minute recess until we, uh, get our front line set up. So, the public hears me. Great. We're going to reconvene so that everybody can have all the right members of our meeting.
Should you not, like, write on the receipt or show it in front of it? Dial in directly?
Well, they're all, they're...
They're all in...
It's us that's having the problem.
Oh, so they can see?
They can see each other, and, and they can hear each other.
So then you need to dial in?
They just can't hear us.
I understand.
Which if we dial in to get a computer connection?
Right. And that doesn't give us a chance to do a meeting?
That's good of you, but...
Well, we're still controlling the meeting.
You're dialing in, so we can get the best... We're going to sound these as soon as I can because everybody's talking.
Yeah.
I said that they are going to try and accomplish all sets.
Okay, so we're going to take... I get it, German?
You don't need much more than about ten more minutes for the public to... Well, I have people saying, "Oh, come on." You know, I... We don't really need to...
Who's that?
We're trying to...
What happened?
We're giving, um... You're going to leave this interconnection off, then, uh... Yeah, we're leaving it off. You're going to have to unmute them. My personal opinion, and if you're not violating anything, we're having technical difficulties. We're going to stop the meeting now. Yeah. Yeah.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by a pound.
I picked New York.
Enter your participant ID, followed by a pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. You are in the meeting now. There are nineteen participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are, you have been put on hold by the host. You cannot listen or talk. You are muted. 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 You are muted.
So, we all can't be on here? Just please do that when you're on here.
So now we have the conference line open in any of your contacts. Make sure they can hear us better.
Everybody can hear us better? Everybody can hear us better? Everybody can hear us better?
Alright. That's all?
Can we turn...
It's time to say?
Yeah.
Alright. 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 Alright.
So now we have the conference line open in any of your contacts. Make sure they can hear us better.
Everybody can hear us better? Everybody can hear us better? Everybody can hear us better?
Alright. 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 Alright.
I can not vote on him. I'll just please do that when he's on. So now we have the conference line open in any of your contacts. Make sure they can hear us better.
Everybody can hear us better? Everybody can hear us better? Everybody can hear us better?
Alright. 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 This is a task for the public. The public hear us. Do you have a public task number here? Can you text us the public whether you can hear us clearly? Hello, 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 hello? Can you hear me?
Break down the song, Larry.
Great.
I was ready to do it, but...
I ain't singing. Yes. They can hear. They can hear. Okay, so, so it's important for the public, for the benefit of the public, that we...
That's great.
That's right. And we, um, speak clearly, and I speak clearly, to the microphone, and let one person speak at a time. And since we're not on video anymore, I think you should identify yourselves before you start to speak. Everybody kind of back here, remember? If you can speak up now. Everyone can now dial yours from the audience, is that correct? Talk as loudly as you can. Okay. We are, um, now going to move down to the next line item here. We are authorizing, Randy Library, our solicitor, to, uh, look into coming up with an ordinance for a, uh, parking dog ordinance, and also a shelter versus, uh, kennel ordinance.
I... No, but, especially our in-laws, fucking do not vote on that, because I am not in it.
Uh, Wayne just doesn't do that.
He said it was up to us.
Does this work as a task? I mean, I'll, I'll go there with it. Make a motion for it. I'll make a motion if we all vote, uh, our solicitor to, uh, come up with a ordinance to prohibit prolonged parking dogs, and also to establish, uh, if in fact a shelter is operating as a kennel, as what other towns have. A zero second. One second to go through the process. I feel like that line goes mid, not beautiful. I'm trying to add to the, uh... I understand. I understand your motion to be one that would instruct the solicitor. I think we all understand this very well. My comment is, I think that it's broad, and I think frankly, I love the solicitor. He's one of the best clients. A lot of times, he's an expensive man, and I don't think we necessarily need to pay him to do that kind of work. I think, frankly, I think that you, as the mayor, with your mayor's association, your long-standing relationships, along with the county and the dozens of administrators and mayors that you know, I would think that with a couple of phone calls, you could get some examples of what other cities do, and you could at least present that to the solicitor and give him some form of... If he really, you haven't given him any real clear instruction, oh, he could put in ten hours, next month, line stuff goes through the back, and he's like, "Oh, no, this isn't what we were talking about." So, maybe you could come up with, and you know a lot of people. I'm not being facetious. You know a lot of people who've done a lot of this kind of work. Why don't you come up with a couple of examples of nearly what you'd like to see, or what you might be, and then we'll ask them to, to reply from that. That's also that I'm going to need to contact each of the municipal courts. We're going to have to ignore it. Level of the first, I believe, higher, you know, twenty minutes. It's not really as, uh... So, we have others in the third book, probably called Online of Science?
Yes, that is, um, I would suggest asking the clerk to look at other townships that you see what they have on their files proposed, and maybe we can adopt that or something.
I would definitely agree. I mean, that's a good, not much of a... If you're speaking, and for our citizens, I think that we should typically involve parking buildings and separate the dog shelters and horses.
Okay.
Because, in my opinion, the dog shelter versus kennel is basically, if you're talking about an individual with almost three or four dogs, that is personal pets, and you can't control what they have in there, because we have nothing that says we have the farm animals, but we don't have those, those pets. So, and, and, and my, my point is, what is the point of the shelter and the kennel limits, or is this a life to enhance? What are we trying to do with that? Are we trying to limit people's number of dogs they have, or cats they have, birds? Birds, whatever? This does, tends to me like we want to address specifically the... I don't agree with that. You're right, I agree with you. Well, then we need to stick with the dog parking ordinance and forget the dog shelter and kennel. I agree with you. Put it home. I'm thinking, yeah. Before we look to achieve the same result with the two, the two items here, so let's start with the, uh, dog parking and dog ordinance, and then the other one. This is Randy Lafferty, the solicitor. The kennel versus shelter, or kennel slash shelter issue is a zoning issue. It's a person, a zoning officer, that other municipalities have incorporated into their zoning regulations that if you have more than a certain number of dogs, it then change and use the property to where it's a pet. But that's not the whole effect of what's currently here, because that's going to be a pretty good thing not to only use it anywhere. So, I'm, and I'm inclined to agree with the two councilmen, um, that you deal with the dog. The problem is the dog parking situation, and that's what I think we should focus on at this point. If you want to look at a land use regulation change down the road, um, that's a whole different process. Okay. I, my own thought about this one, I have the most, uh, in my top of my mind. I need to deal with this one, something that, uh, the dog's thing is... Since the dog, the dog's law, the two, that may just be all you got. So, going back to my motion briefly then, I would, uh, not... Speak out, Randy. If I may interject, if you're using, uh, over here in the South, if you're doing part of the court, to be looking into other municipalities asking what type of dog parking buildings they have in effect at night, and this is the last one. Okay? You want to...
But to clarify, I mean, I don't feel too sure you've been doing any sample of dog parking, or even that's gone. You want me to run, which is the committee, and narrow down what the city's best two F M N, and send just a few? And I? Well, I don't want to come here with plenty to look at, that's kind of not going anywhere. I'm presenting the best two or three, and I need down to the, what's, they think, is driven by dog thing, and so we can go to the kennel after I gather it.
With your statement, regarding to your research on the dog, the parking dog ordinance, I think that we need to address features of our same setup in a rural setting with this type of ordinance, rather than, than what, or, uh, towards, yeah, towards... Mr. Owen, I'm, I'm trying to discuss this, but we're trying to balance other things in principle. What we would allow if there were actually people sitting in the audience, if there were actually people sitting in the audience, and Mr. Owen were one of them, and he raised his hand at this time, and said, "Get us the coach committee, go look into this, and cancel, and get back to us with some ideas for the other municipalities, councillors have done to address parking dogs." The coach committee is willing to do that, but he has some dates. They pretend he's sitting behind a grayed stand and shouting.
You got it.
You're next. Randy, I believe your question, uh, which is, urgent pass, I don't know how to do this, or whatever, you know, you just got fired, or something like that, uh, to this uh... We, uh, we have the right to, uh, on the, on the, on the island, so I want to... Speaking of, uh, goodness, I... Question is, to this one, sir, do we have the right to set our own speed limits on our reasonable freedom?
Free.
I believe that we do, and we do not. This is Mr. Mason. In regards to this issue, this is a discussion, that we're not only giving the, the advice of the prior solicitor in this matter, we also took the advice of our, um, engineer. And it was clearly stated through the statute that any street or road in an area that consists of less houses from distance is going to be gaining fifty mile an hour speed limit in this area. And I understand this is probably going back to the gentleman who lives on First Avenue, who constructed signs and put them up there, in my opinion, illegally, because first of all, they're in the right of way. They're twenty-five mile an hour signs. They just, they're not consistent with the road usage and the amount of residents on the road, so therefore, the state says, according to the solicitor, and according to the engineer, that it must be mandated a fifty mile an hour rule, unless we decide to spend ten thousand dollars on a road study, which I think is ridiculous. And that is correct. This is the statutory limit established under Title 39. I don't think that's what we're talking about. That's the statute we were talking about, it was, I don't recall the number of the statutes that we brought up. And you can make applications to the C O P to modify the speed limit. However, they are going to require a traffic, uh, in order to establish. And, and, and the issue that I have with this particular subject is that the signs, even after the individual was told that it was a fifty mile an hour street, that it would be in violation of the state code if we set it for speed limit at any other speed less than fifty mile an hour without a road study, but upon themselves to put the signs in anyhow. And it's my understanding that our zoning officer, and I talked to him about it, told him that the signs are illegal, and asked him to remove the sign, and they're still there. So, this is the issue. Do we, do we go by the state statute that was given to us not only by our, our engineer, but the prior solicitor? Will we have Mr. Lafferty look it up again? I think that if we start messing with state statutes, we're opening up a can of worms. If you have something that's inside the village area where you can reduce the speed limit, we have one First Avenue that comes from Cockerhill Road to Cumberland Avenue, which is probably a distance of maybe three and a half, four miles. We have a total of five houses. There's, I don't disagree with anything you said, but there's more, the homework was, in extent, that the signs that are, have been put up posting twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, it's not adding that alone, in light of the fact that they're , God, it's by horses, and that it is a horse farm. It looks to me like it is one of the horse farms, in fact, I think I already referenced it before. Well, it's, it is a, a private owner who has horses. I don't know if you want to call it a horse farm, but it's, um, it's a private owner. And do they still have the right to post their own speed limit signs on a road and And you can make applications to the C O P to modify the speed limit. However, they are going to require a traffic, in relation to the statute. And traffic twenty-two. The issue that I have with this particular subject is that the signs, even after the individual was told that it was a fifty mile an hour street, and it would be in violation of the state code if we set it for speed limit at any other speed less than fifty mile an hour, without a road study, upon themselves to put the signs in any time. And it's my understanding that our zoning officer, and talked to him about it, pulled into the signs are illegal, and asked him to remove the sign, and they're still there. So, this is the issue, do we, do we go by the state statute that is given to us, not only by our, our engineer, but the prior solicitor? If we can have Mr. Lafferty look it up again, I think that if we start messing with state statutes, we're opening up a can of worms. This is not something that's inside the village area where you can reduce the speed limit. We have one First Avenue, that comes from Cuckoanoe Road to Cumberland Avenue, which is probably a distance of maybe three and a half, four miles. We have a total of five houses. There's, I don't disagree with anything you said, but the, the, the homework was, you spent that, the signs that are, have been put up, hoping twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, it's not adding that alone, in light of the fact that they're, that it's guarded by horses, and that it is a horse farm, it looks to me like it isn't one of the horse farms, in fact, I think I heard you reference it before. Well, it, it is a, a private owner who has horses, I don't know if you want to call it a horse farm, but it's, um, it's a private owner. And do they still have the right to post their own speed limit signs on a road, and post it at sixty miles an hour by the state statute?
And then the victim has no right to post people?
Exactly. That's my point, but are we, are we as a governing body seeking, and, and, I mean, we, we know we're here, the solicitor is not here, but the rest of the school year, when this citizen came in and made his appeal on behalf of the safety of his children, et cetera, et cetera, and others, and, um, it is not, you've got a point, there is an issue there. So, that, do we as a governing body want to seek to help him have that section of road recognized as a horse, whatever it is, and give it a twenty-five mile an hour for that section of the road? Or do we want to find a way to spank him for having stepped out of that school, or something? I think we made a recommendation in prior, was to put down signs, children as flags, reduce speed, in the attempt to get people to slow down, if they're gonna do it. It doesn't make any difference whether you have that sign up, a twenty-five mile an hour sign up, or a fifty mile an hour sign. People are gonna speed no matter what, and I don't know if that sign is gonna make a bit of difference. The issue remains is the sign is not in, in line with the state statute and, and law. For what, okay, so then, does any of us here tonight know what would be, how you would approach putting up those? Something you have, you see them on the Leathers Avenue, what's the name of that, anybody? There, it is a common practice, how, if it's, if citizens are putting up their own, who are you being with? Roadways, the county, David Roadway, who is it that decides that the horse sign? But I think there are other places, I think that, I think that where you're talking about on Eleventh Avenue is not being a fifty mile an hour speed limit in that area. I get it. You know, so, that was something, I don't know if there's a statute that, that governs that? The only one we discussed was the fact that, that based on the way that First Avenue was laid out, the, the number of homes are on there, they have to be so many feet apart in order to come in there where you can actually lessen that speed. And First Avenue does not meet that criteria.
Thank you, Chris.
Zoning officers?
Okay? Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello?
This is the zoning office. Can you hear me? Okay. Alright, so signs on First Avenue. I went to that property, the guy asked me to leave the property, okay? I just sent him a violation notice, he can't post anything in the right of way of any street in the city, or some way. The state cops were supposed to be down there today about him posting a traffic sign, which you can't do. Now, you, you, the municipality can control traffic signs. So, if the municipality wishes to put a different speed limit on that part of the road, um, the municipality has to put proper signage up, uh, that's supposed to be there. Twenty-five mile an hour, then resume speed, I mean, this guy's got signs posted on property he don't even own.
Sorry, I get you. Guys, this one's done, it's too difficult. Now, yes, if this one is, uh, not strict, I would be, I would be more comfortable, I would be more comfortable, and certainly with the state. How do we do that? I don't know. I would, um, if we get the, the, like, if there's a matter of, if we have to wait to do something, we're not, with your topic study. And I guess that's question, so, if you will, um, other than that?